I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have some special recognitions this evening. Welcome, everyone.
You do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a number of great opportunities and information to share with you tonight. So with your permission, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Davis and the student leaders who are here from Auburn High School who would like to give you an update of some of their things they have been engaged in this summer. So if you want to, I mean, it's the school year, if you want to come up to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm really not one to lead off most of the time, but I'll do the best I can.
Clean up dinner, right?
But it's nice seeing all of yous. Usually I see you around budget time and I get a little nervous there, so. But tonight's a little better. Thanks for having us. First of all, myself. I guess, can you hear that? Mr. Berthium was a town selectman and Kathleen Lutz, who is a coach for Unified Track, as well as, she's an assistant coach at the middle school in cross-country. A couple of years ago, we got together and we formed what we called the Leadership Team, which is made up predominantly of captains of our athletic teams, as well as potential captains. So in August, we have a gathering before school starts. We do some icebreakers and we meet and kind of set the agenda for the upcoming year. What we're gonna do, a fundraiser. Every year, we do one big fundraiser. And last year, we did one Run for a Rocket for Nicole Berthium, which is Mr. Berthium's daughter. This year, we had a townwide volleyball tournament. We also rake leaves for elderly in town, help with choveling snow. It's basically, you know, a lot of the seniors, we do have some juniors involved. There's about forty, forty students, student athletes in that leadership team. And it's basically giving back to the community. That's basically, you know, what this is all about. So tonight, we do have, out of those forty students, we have five ambassadors. And Liz Anastauskas is one of the five, should be speaking to you shortly. And then we have two other students. One, Shannon Sampson and Jake Stokes, who attended a leadership conference at Bridgewater State along with about twenty other students. And they will elaborate on their experience at that day at Bridgewater. Lindsey Berthium is also one of the ambassadors, who unfortunately just lost a very grueling ten-inning softball game. And that's why she was running a little late. So anyways, I'd like to turn it over to Liz Anastauskas at first. And at the end, if you have any questions for any of us, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Elizabeth Anastauskas and I am one of five ambassadors from the leadership team at Auburn High School. The leadership team was created by our athletic director, Mr. Davis, coach of Unified Track, Mrs. Lutz, and our town selectman, Mr. Berthium, who wanted to unite the sports captains and leaders within the school to make a positive impact on our Auburn community. Last year, the leadership team raised over $2,000 out of 5K color run for Nicole Berthium, an Auburn alumni, who lost her arm in a boating accident. This year, our leadership team has gone on trips and has worked on putting together fundraisers to support the Phelan family and the Thibodeau family. Mr. Phelan, a former teacher at Auburn High School, suffered a stroke this past fall. The leadership team wanted to help with medical expenses, so we are working on giving them the money we raised from running the townwide volleyball tournament in March. The Thibodeau family lost their house in a fire last summer, so the leadership team gave them $500 to help them move forward. This fall, Mr. Davis took several members to the DCE Center to learn about the dangers of drunk driving. After listening to an abundance of speakers, we were challenged to create a PSA warning teens not to drink and drive. This spring, Mr. Davis also took members to Bridgewater State, where they learned leadership skills and how to further unite the school, which Shannon Sampson and Jake Stokes will speak more on later. The leadership team is a way for students to work together to give back to the community and to lead Auburn, to lead by example in Auburn High School. We want to bring the community together and directly impact our high school. With Mr. Davis, Mrs. Lutz, and Mr. Berthium's gracious help, I can only imagine what the leadership team is going to do next to leave their positive mark on the town of Auburn. Thank you. And I would like to turn over to Lindsey Berthium, who is going to speak about student council and their impact this year.
Sorry, I have to read off my phone because I don't have it printed. My name is Lindsey Berthium and I am the historian of the student council and also a member of the leadership team. As a part of student council, we have several days throughout the year that we use to raise money, to raise awareness and show support for certain causes, like Pink Out for Breast Cancer Awareness and wearing blue and black in honor of Officer Tarantino. We also try to involve the whole town by putting together events for parents and children to attend, like the Haunted Hall and our Holiday Craft Night in Santa that put in, is put on by the entire council. This year, we took part in the Can Jive for Auburn Youth and Family Services, collecting almost 900 cans. And we also host the Blood Jive a couple of times a year. Our council often works alongside Rockets to Rockets. In the past couple of years, we have attended the Unified Bodhi Tournament and the Unified Sports Jamberie, along with helping out at the Special Olympics. This year, the council is taking part in the Walk for Hunger this month, along with having helped out with the David Broder 5K, the Energy Fair Parents Night, and the Chamber of Commerce Health Expo. Throughout the year, members of the council have the opportunity to attend several conferences, which are hosted at different schools in Central Mass. We also have the opportunity for a small group of members to attend the state conference hosted in Hyannis, where this year, we received the Five Star Council Award, the Council of Excellence Award. And for next year, student council is planning to work with the leadership team to rehype homecoming. Both are very exciting about it.
Next, we will have Jake Stokes and Shannon Sampson elaborate on their day at Bridgewater State. So Shannon and Jake.
So about, I think it was about a month ago, about twenty students took a trip to Bridgewater State and we met with the professor there. And we just had kind of like a meeting and it was really, it was a lot of fun. We talked about ways to like unite the school and just get different clubs and like different groups of people together so that it wouldn't be as like isolated, so there weren't as many like cliques. And we thought of some activities that we could do that would like bring the school together as a whole.
Yeah. Like Shannon mentioned, our school sometimes can be a little clicky and we all like got together and talked about that and focused on issues that specifically regard our school. So it was very effective in bringing us all together in that way because it was just very specific and directed toward our school.
Excellent. Any questions? No?
Well, thank you for your hard work. But I would like to ask you, what kind of things do you, for instance, did you think you were gonna do back at the school to help make it less clicky?
Yeah. So we came up with, one of like the big ideas was, some of like the elementary schools still do it. It's like a spree day type thing, but like we thought if we did it, it could be more of like a field day where like the whole school just comes together and like we go outside and we just do a lot of different activities that like interest a lot of different groups and it would just be like uniting us together.
That sounds good, yeah.
Wayne?
I just like to say, it sounded like a great thing and the biggest part of it that I liked is you're trying to get everybody together to work together instead of like different groups.
Yeah. Like we thought we could do like sports teams, members of like the band, the chorus, like just a lot of different groups.
Keep up the good work.
Yes, thank you.
That's great. I think, I think we're all very, very proud of you for taking the initiative to do this, beyond everything that you do in the course of a week, whether it's your schoolwork and obviously you're involved in athletics, you're involved in other clubs. And then to take on this for a greater cause, we're definitely proud of you and we appreciate the hard work that you do. And hopefully, when it's time for you to leave Auburn High, you could pass that along to some of the younger students. And as Wayne said, I really think it's great that there is an initiative to bring everyone together because it certainly makes for a happy school environment. And thank you, Mr. Davis, for leading the charge. Much appreciated. Anything else?
I have a question. Just say forty students are in the club or the group?
It's about forty, yeah.
Yeah, that's, you know, captains, right around forty.
Captains of each of them?
Yes.
Okay, good. So you have people of all age groups, so they can carry this on next year?
These are two of the, you know, underclassmen. So that, on the Bridgewater trip, that's what might, there's all the potential for next year.
That's great, yeah.
Excellent. I thought you were upperclassmen.
From Mr. Berthium and Miss Lutz. So I don't want to think it's just me.
No, that sounds like a very strong supporting cast you've got there with Kathy and Lionel on board, so again.
And just the last thing, I know, you know, we have prom coming up on the 13th and Liz touched upon briefly. We, some of our leaders put together a public service announcement on drunk driving. So Friday, the day before the prom, we're gonna televise it throughout the school. It's like, you know, just a three-minute clip, but it really gets the message.
That's great, because a lot of times.
It's really nice that students do, so.
Is that something that we may be able to see a recording of?
Yeah, I think we have a, we have a copy of it, so they can actually send it.
That would be great. Would like to see that. No, we appreciate the positive things that you're doing and thank you so much for coming tonight.
And just lastly, I mean, I would just like to say, you know, if we go on these field trips, you know, occasionally, and it's really a credit to you people, you know, supporting education like you do and also allowing funding where we can take those trips. So, you know, we really do appreciate that. I know the students do as well.
We are fully supportive and if you ever find that you're in need of something, as I always say, just come to us because, you know, you're doing some great things and we appreciate it. We can't say it enough. Dr. Brunel, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I do just want to congratulate Mr. Davis, Mr. Berthium, and Mrs. Lutz for bringing this idea forward. Tonight, you're gonna see there are numerous students and groups being recognized really as leaders. And, you know, the academics is important and athletics is important and finance and all of that, but really making sure that we're raising young men and women in partnership with your parents to be respectful and make us proud out there in the world. And it's great to see, so really applaud all of the work you're doing.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for the loss against your task, but I'm sorry. Very sorry.
And they can take off.
They can, yes.
And if you'd like to take off before we start the next phase of the meeting, feel free, we won't keep you.
Well, we're gonna stay and listen to our coverage.
Oh, okay. Oh, excellent. Well, very respectful of you. I wouldn't expect any less. Yeah, why don't we move that up?
So Ms. Fedella, if you want to now, we'll move that up on the agenda. If you want to give an overview for everyone, you probably already know this, this is Ms. Karen Fedella. She's one of our outstanding teachers at Auburn High, teaches French and takes regularly students to Quebec and France. So she wanted to give you an update.
Thank you, Dr. Brunel. So from April 14th to the 22nd, we had fifteen of our students from Auburn and we went all over France. We had some rain that greeted us early on, but we finished in beautiful sunny Nice in the south of France. And one of our students, he's the tallest one in the middle of your screen there, Matthew Bregman, put together a really awesome video that really encapsulates the entire trip. So I'm going to play that and just sort of narrate what you're seeing. These are all French songs that we listened to in class, by the way. This is the group arriving in Paris at the airport. And they're filming their first steps off the plane. We're sort of in this tube taking us into the airport. And now they're seeing some of the graffiti. And this is actually right outside of our hotel. Our first trip into the Paris metro, that's the subway system. There was a full, there was a six-person band playing. Kids thought that was really cool. This is, this is still day one, so the kids are in the Louvre now. They are, they hit the ground running as soon as they traveled overnight. We're in the Louvre now in the beginning of day one. And I think the kids were just dazzled by all the artwork. I know Matthew is on a quest to see the Mona Lisa, so this is his walk towards her. And there's a lot of art along the way. I think if you stack up all the art in the Louvre, it's about thirteen miles long. And there she is, smirking at all of us. And here we are, coming out of the metro again. This is right near our hotel in the opera area of Paris. And we had a beautiful city landscape, typical French streets. And this is our walk to our first dinner. And the students just love the look of Paris, even though it's a little bit cloudy. And here is Versailles, of course, 24 karat gold on all the gates. Although Louis and Marie had a sad end here, but that's okay. Just very ornate on the inside. I think the students really enjoyed seeing that, as well as the gardens outside. And our tour company, ACIS, has this fun feature where the kids will ride bikes around the gardens of Versailles for about two hours or so. So they got to explore where you really couldn't walk it. The kids got to just bike around for a few hours and they enjoyed that. There's also an opportunity to go boating in some of these ponds. This is back in Paris now, we're on top of the Eiffel Tower. And you can see the views that the kids were lucky to have. Nice, clear view. Lots of protective wire around the sides. And that's of course, the beautiful Seine River. And this was Sunday now, so on Sunday night, some of us went on a boat ride and they captured the glittering Eiffel Tower and all the sights from the Seine. And I took a bunch of students also to Easter Sunday Mass. So we, the group got divided, but we ended up having the boat ride a second night for the students who decided to go to Easter Sunday. It's two of our guys, Matthew and Maxwell. And here's the group underneath the Eiffel Tower. And this is the famous opera house, the side of it in Paris. Acte Triomphe, of course. And right underneath, that's their Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, that is directly below the arch. This is Matthew's favorite chocolate dessert. And this is Sacre Coeur, which we were so lucky to go to Easter Mass there, of all places. A group of about seven kids and I went to Mass. This is the Montmartre area, the artsy section of Paris, where all your Impressionists and Post-Impressionists painted. And this is the I Love You All, it says I Love You in a hundred different languages. And now we've moved south to Avignon in the Provence area. And this used to be the Papal Palace, so this is where the Pope resided before Vatican City. And our group swore this was the best ice cream in all of France, was in this town in particular. We had some ice cream lovers on this trip. And now we're in the town called Nîmes, which has a coliseum very similar to the Roman Coliseum, but it's actually in better shape. So our students had free rein walking around the arena, even though you'll see in a moment, it was sixty to seventy mile an hour winds that day with no railings, so our students were careful. But you can see how wonderfully intact it is. If you've seen the Coliseum in Rome, it's crumbled and, but this one, they still have events here. And some of our students went on the arena floor, pretended they were gladiators and bulls and all that good stuff. We were walking home, there was a costume party at the college in the town. So they really got a taste of everything on this trip. This is a salt marsh. You can see the pink water. They are harvesting all different salts there. The kids took a tour of that. They never thought salt would be so interesting, but it was. And now we are down south in Nice. So we got some beautiful sunshine. The weather had been a little windy, cold, but as you can see, we are in Place Massena here. And it's nothing but sunshine in the south of France and the kids really, really loved it. That's my yacht. And now we're on top of the mountainous village called Es, where they, oh, that's a pizza, but they literally built a town on top of a mountain. So that's a group shot of all of our kids, plus two other groups that joined us. Here we are on the Promenade des Anglais in Nice. The kids are loving the ocean. And we did a whole lot of walking, so a lot of pictures in this video were from, I think if you have a Fitbit, you know your steps. And some days, we reached forty, forty-five thousand steps.
Wow.
Yeah. Yep. So I was accused of running a weight loss camp, but I swear it wasn't. But the kids definitely got a lot of steps in. So you can see the different landscape. Look at this beautiful view we had on top of Es. So it's, it's, you know, water, it's rocky landscape, it's greenery. And from here, we move on to Monaco, where of course, the billionaires live tax-free. And here we are. In a moment, you'll see all of these luxury apartments that are built into the side of Monaco, as well as the yacht harbor. And down below, that's where the Grand Prix is run throughout Monaco. And this is just a typical alleyway. I mean, just beautiful, even in the alleys of Monaco, it's beautiful there. And Matthew captured a few of the cars in the parking lot. Just your everyday car, you know, nothing fancy. And our students got along so well. I think a lot of them grew much closer than they thought they ever could with each other. And here we are boarding the plane home. So this was our first plane to Germany before we met our connection to Boston. And that is it.
Oh, that was great.
I didn't know if you could really fully appreciate how much the kids enjoyed themselves and they had a wonderful time culturally. They practiced their language skills. They got such a kick out of the fact that they could be understood in French. So I just thank you again for approving the trip and it was just invaluable to their growth, personal growth, academic growth, social growth. It really was just an amazing opportunity, so we thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing them and you doing it yearly. It's fantastic. I think we're gonna have to start making a stipulation that all the trips are recorded because it's great to be able to.
Definitely, yeah.
Makes a big difference when you talk about it, to have the video.
Yes, yeah. Just to see what they, yeah. The one thing we didn't capture in that movie was we had a folk dancing lesson and a lot of our students were plucked from the audience and they were dancing. I think they were so busy dancing, they didn't record each other. So next time, we'll try to get a copy of that for you, but it was a lot of fun.
Either that or you're hiding those tapes.
Yeah. The kids said they forgot to record, yeah. That's possible.
Do you have any extra chaperones?
Okay. I will keep that in mind.
Any other questions or comments?
Just thank you so much for sharing that with us.
Oh, great.
I can't wait to do it myself.
Please do, you won't regret it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, just thank you, and you know, you mentioned this, Mr. Scobie. Our teachers give an awful lot of their personal time as well to give our students these experiences. And we have day trips that go on and these that last overnight and overseas and outside of our country. So thanks for doing that and obviously the kids had a fantastic, memorable time.
They did, they did. Thank you.
Welcome, thanks.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening. Just like Belichick, Mr. Davis. The team locks in together and leaves together. See ya, have a nice night. That was beautiful. All right, moving right along.
So keeping with our theme of just recognizing our students, I think I had shared with you before that Lucas Bellistracci, for a second year in a row, was recognized for the National Geographic Bee that they hold here over at the middle school first, but then went to Elms College. But I also wanted to share with you, as I alluded when our other students were here, that, you know, we want to teach along in partnership with students, parents, but respect and leadership qualities and things. And this email that came in unsolicited from a parent of a child out in Situate that had run into Lucas at this state geography bee. And just speaking about the kindness and support that Lucas showed to him and, you know, you can do it and obviously made a lasting impression on this child and the family. So I thought it worthy to share that with you and congratulate Lucas and obviously his family for his upbringing. And this is but one example. I mean, we just have great kids in Auburn. We have wonderful, supportive families. But I thought this was really epitomized what we do in partnership with families.
Well, if you could just take the best parts of that letter and just repeat it. And then there was also the other email that we saw that I'd like to share just very quickly, those two stories for those watching at home. I thought it was excellent with a couple of Coach Swedberg's players and Lucas. And if we could just get into it, we've got a little bit of extra.
Sure.
I know we're all tired from town meeting, but I just thought, I was really moved by both of those stories.
So, Dear Mr. Gagnon, we wanted to recognize an exceptional student, Lucas Bellistracci. Our son, Theo, met Lucas at the Mass State Geography Bee last month. Lucas showed such kindness and support to our son, who was in sixth grade. Instead of perhaps trying to make our son nervous, Lucas made encouraging comments like, "You can do it, you got this." Lucas showed true sportsmanship when no one was looking. In fact, if our son had not told us about this, we would never have known. By supporting other children, Lucas showed genuine kindness and respect. I suspect you already know what a fine young man Lucas is, but we wanted you to hear how he acts when he thinks no one is looking. A true gentleman, who is a shining star for Auburn Middle School, signed this wonderful family out in Situate. And they did ask us to pass it along to the Bellistracci family, which we did. And I know that they were appreciative as well. The other email that we had received was from a parent of a young child who had participated in a recent baseball clinic, Mr. Swedberg leads with our Auburn High baseball team. And all of the players on that team had shown just such great kindness, were true role models to this children, to this young child, which is the goal of that program, is to really have the kids emulate our students, not only for their athletic ability, but just for their leadership qualities as well. And they even went and attended one of his T-ball games, I think it was, which certainly made this young child's day. And one of them, I think even went hurt, if I remember correctly. They have, had been hit or something in the game before. It was uncertain whether he would go and they showed up and just absolutely made the day. And I-
The the, yeah, the best part was that the the parents said, well, you know, the the little guy said, they're gonna come to my friends, they're gonna come to my T-ball. And the parents were like, well, I, yeah, I wouldn't count on that rarely, you know, when the the big guy showed up. And to that little kid, that's like major league players that it was just great between that and Lucas's story. It's just, it's fantastic. And it's it's because we have um a leadership team, we have teachers that go above and beyond. They do, and and like those students, this evening, we're talking about um taking on that initiative to bring people together. It's great. When you can build a climate like that in school, in our town, it just, it's it's heartwarming and it makes what we do worthwhile. So even though we're not getting paid for this, it makes it all worthwhile when we see one of the things like like this happening. And I like to believe that it's a trickle-down effect from um some of the initiatives that we take on, um what the leadership team does and what our teachers do. So really, it's just great when we can celebrate things like this.
It is, and if I could add to this, I take my mother to the mall on Fridays usually and I'm pushing her in a wheelchair. And a lot of times, it's when the high school has released. And I can't tell you the number of times the high school students have gone out of their way to hold the doors open for us and make it possible for me to push her in easily. And I mean, I thank them every time, but it's like, wow. We've got some great, great people, young men and young ladies in our town. And it's I'm proud to be associated.
It's it's a great community, and if we continue to um to do our part, um to keep it that way, then um who knows, who knows, we we could even improve on where we are now. So it's just great to see. So I didn't mean to put you on the spot in that story and bring up the one about our baseball team, but as I always say, we've got the greatest in athletics, music, academics, but when we get to when we get to um this personal touch, it really takes us a step beyond.
Wayne. I'd just like to thank George for asking the superintendent to to read that and um discuss it a little bit, because it is something um that's personal and it shows the great of our kids, how how great they they, we have our students in Auburn. You know, just they strive for the best and like George had said about sports and everything else, we say everything about that, but a story like this is heartwarming. And it really shows the great of our kids, and I want to thank you.
Excellent. Moving on.
So we have um some students who were recently recognized for their art expertise at Mount Wachusett Community College. Some of the names that you have heard before. Olivia Obrowski was one of the top ten cash award winners. But other students with um who were asked to exhibit and did outstanding jobs were Nicholas Williams, Olivia is mentioned, Dakota Gleason, Genevieve Rumrail, and Bridget Campbell. So congratulations to all of them, as well as to the teacher, who really um provides these opportunities to have the students work this way and really be recognized outside of our walls. A Model UN competition recently took place at Concord High School. And out of the seven committees, Auburn High placed first in four of them. I want to thank Mr. Bonaccio as well as Mrs. Ms. Fisher, who attend those and lead the Model UN program. I've had an opportunity to attend at least one of the conferences. And it is impressive, to say the least, the topics that they take on, um they really, it it's it's just a model of the UN uh in taking on different roles and how seriously the students do in preparation for it. Um, some of the discussions they have would um would be shocking to some people in in the the global um situations that they're discussing. So for our students to have placed first in four of the seven, um and they were up against some of the advanced academies, um private and public schools. Um, there were twenty schools um there in a total of a hundred fifty students. So the winners were Matt Belvery, Joe Facto, Emily Lancaster, and Faith DeShoya. So kudos to all of them, but to the teachers as well for providing uh that opportunity. It's really a great one. Um, we just actually, Dr. Lozay and I were able to get some photos of this, that um Ryan Tillery, who was a student up at Auburn High, he was actually recognized for his over four hundred hours of volunteering at St. Vincent Hospital. So we received um some photos. Ryan um is in Ms. Querion's class. He works with the job coach with Sarah Gilrain. Um, I've been up at the high school and walking through in the cafeteria and he is helping to uh prepare cookies to be used at the Auburn High um cafeteria. He works outside of our schools too. But just wanted to share with you how proud we are of him uh and the work that he does and really represents Auburn extremely well as well. Uh Hanover Insurance Scholarship recipients, Dr. Lozay and I will be going, I believe it's on the seventeenth of May, uh along with Mr. Handfield and Mrs. Sampson. And this is the first year, we actually have four students being recognized. Um, this is a generous financial scholarship reward given by Hanover each year. Uh typically, it's been one student per year. We did have a year, I recall, that there were two. Uh, but there are four being recognized this year, Meg Buregard, Leah Healy, Emma Lyons, and Monica Tran. Um, I congratulate all of them and certainly thank Hanover for their generous scholarship donations. Um, each of these young people have great plans. I don't remember exactly where they're going, but I know they'll look forward to sharing it with them um when we celebrate with them on the seventeenth. And then lastly, uh actually, I'm gonna add one more thing. Um, wanted to share about a few up to place sixty mini grants uh that was recently received at um Swanson Row and Mrs. Kaufman, Mrs. Nikopoulos, Dr. Lopez, as well as Mrs. King, a food service director, uh were intimately involved in this. And it has resulted in what's called the Swiss Can. I don't know if you want to share any more about that. Um, but students over a seven-week period are doing some cooking and learning about nutrition.
Thank you, yes, dear, thank you. Uh, yeah, it's been a really great experience, I think, for the kids. I I am the vegetable shopper and dishwasher. I take no credit in um the lesson, uh any of the teaching or anything, but um I, we're using it as a pilot program actually to to hopefully um help Ms. King gain a ninety thousand dollar grant so that this can be disseminated into some of the other grades. Because some of the home life classes don't really exist anymore in the high school. But the kids are able to not only learn about nutrition and wellness, they learn about food safety, just about basic safety in the kitchen. And they're also getting to try a lot of different foods that they might love, like to try, like some kids had zucchini on their pizzas and we learned how to make healthy muffins, like low fat. Um, but it's just really cute to see the kids um get involved and they're working on a logo so that they can then um hopefully be nutrition ambassadors as they move forward. They really got a kick out of the programs we had last weekend. Uh, last week, the USDA actually came out to present on food safety and they brought them cutting boards. And a couple of weeks ago, um the dairy assoc- uh the the Farmer Dairy Association, I believe, came to give them a giant check. It was really cute. So uh we're hoping to roll this out, you know, and like this was some of the other wellness initiatives that are included in the strategic plan, so.
Girls' anthems?
Yes, we have, I think we have more boys than girls, actually. It's it's been fantastic, so.
Boys enjoy food more, I think.
They do, and we leave them at the end of the line to put their dishes together. A lot of their ingredients are coming in. It's fun, it's really cute. They're all great kids and hopeful and we make them clean and set up and it's been fun, it's a fun.
That's a great program. Thanks for stepping up and and being a part of it.
Yeah.
Making making that happen. I think um I'd like to take this opportunity to I I think it all ties them together and and that's to thank the town for fully um supporting our budget. Not only um just last night through that um grueling meeting, but um year after year, um they're very supportive of the budget that we bring forward. And I think a lot of these things that 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 we're um celebrating tonight are evidence that the money is being well spent. Um, the the money's being spent on on the clubs, the the teachers who who have a passion for these clubs, who have a passion for going the extra mile and making sure that these students um are able to go on these trips, that they're able to reach out to other students. All of these initiatives, I wish there was a way that we could share all of the information that we're celebrating tonight with everyone in town. So I like to take every opportunity that I can, whenever I have an opportunity to speak publicly, I'm sure there's only three or four people watching at home right now. Whenever I have an opportunity to speak in front of a lot of people, I just like to thank the town for their support. Because really, it's 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 money well spent. They can see that um we're not overspending, we're not asking for for more than we need. With with results like this, I mean, I'm sure that they will also want to celebrate in some of these accomplishments and achievements.
Agreed.
So I just wanted to say that.
Wayne. I would like to also thank the town meeting members for their support on our budget every year, because I remember at a time when I first come on the committee, they were putting our budget on hold all the time and then it was a lengthy, lengthy conversation, different articles, different reasons. And the past few years, if you look back, um a lot of our budgets just have not been put on hold. So that just shows you what the people in the town and the town meeting members really understand what the school department's doing, you know, bringing out more to let the people know what's going on and what's happening with our budget. And I think a lot of them understand that now we do it as um as least as possible, but we have to make sure we maintain our students' education. And I think to see him not putting it on hold on the budget last few years really shows the appreciation from town meeting members and the well-jogged at the school committee and the um leadership team that put the budget together and I mean, it's down to the bare bones, we're we don't have, we don't have the extra money, but we do educate our kids and it just shows on the length of these two stories that you were talking about, the students tonight, and other things that happen with our students, with the community and stuff like that. It all works together and all shows how much the the schools are putting forward our educations of our children. And I like to thank the town meeting members for the vote too.
Thank you for that. Um, you just reminded me of something. It's it's uh my colleagues on this board, uh Doc and Dr. Burnell's transparency toward the town when it comes to budget, as well as everything else that we do um operationally. It's um it's transparency. I think they appreciate that. And you sort of um lead the way for us and direct us and um, you know, o- overall, it's 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 us working together, but it's your direction and and your and the transparency that you pass along to the town, so I think it's a great thing. I don't want to over-celebrate. We've celebrated now for probably an extra five or ten minutes, but really, it's it's great to have that support, to know that we have that support. So thank you.
If I may, just before we move on to the next, um two other programs that didn't get in here, just wanted to highlight uh the Earth Day celebration that they had at Swanson Row this past um Saturday. I had the chance to speak with Dr. Lopez and there were over two hundred families uh in attendance and really was just a great community event uh that took place there. And I know I briefly mentioned it last night, but I just cannot say enough about Les Mis. I don't know if you were able to see it, but the students and the um teachers, Mr. LaPete and Ms. Bailey. It was absolutely magnificent. It was just, I think I left a voice message to um Mrs. Otten on my ride home. I usually have things that I remember and I have to leave a voice message lest I forget when I come in on Monday and said, you just would not believe how awesome it was, so really, really well done.
It sounds like it was, it was the best ever.
Yeah.
And I saw a few video clips of it on social media and I was very impressed, but
Truly amazing.
It's great. It just, it 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 just keeps going on and on. Like I said, the the sports, the music, the now the acting. What else can we add? It's right the tomorrow hours.
And then um finally wanted to, this is a a great weekend and last week as well, a time to really recognize all of the individuals that make this uh work. So between the Administrative Assistance Day, which was on April twenty-sixth, Teacher Appreciation Week, which is ongoing right now, School Nurses Day, which is mid-next week, and School Nutrition Staff, which will be on Friday. It's an opportunity for us to thank those people who contribute day in and day out to the success, because it's never about one person. In fact, the Rockets Review article that I wrote and will be published on in Friday's Auburn News was all about what I felt was an underlying theme of last night's annual town meeting um that really epitomized teamwork. That everybody, you know, working together. Um, and it isn't about always agreeing on everything, but it's about having the best interest of the community, which I think really shown through.
That's great. Yeah, thanks to um all of our staff. I probably should have known that it was Teacher Appreciation Day, right? Someone should have said something to me, flowers or something, but we're halfway through the week, there's still time.
Still time.
Maybe tomorrow. Seeing no citizens' comments, um or either I'm doing a terrible job. No student representatives report. I would seek approval of the minutes of May eighteenth.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of May eighteenth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Moving on to the superintendents.
Did you say May eighteenth?
Oh, it's September.
Should we say April eighteenth? April fifteenth?
No. This is April fifth.
Try the fifth.
April fifth.
April fifth.
Two thousand seventeen.
Oh, yeah, well, that was obvious.
We haven't had May eighteenth yet. Well, we'll approve them anyhow.
It's taken motion to approve April fifth meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April fifth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I wonder why I didn't get any Teacher Appreciation flowers.
Well, it's coming, May eighteenth. Just hold on.
All right, now the superintendent's report.
So as we do annually at this time of the year, we look to have you approve the out-of-state field trips for next school year so that they can continue their planning. Uh, most, if not all, of these are ones that have taken place in the past. Um, the one regarding uh Dartmouth College that actually has to do with the Model UN, they just happens to be up in New Hampshire, where their um conference will be held in April of next year. The next one is to Oyster Bay, New York. This is also, uh, it's for the um advanced placement U.S. history students to visit the Teddy Roosevelt's House in Sagamore Hill. The Adventure Park to Storrs, you have recently approved. Um, this is an end-of-year trip down in Storrs, Connecticut for the sophomore class, which will be in May of eighteen. The trip to Madrid, you have approved in the past. That's that modified exchange that we have uh with the students returning to us uh later that same year. The trip to Quebec, uh Ms. Fidella, who was here earlier, um takes her students on. The Pequot Museum, that our third graders have gone to down in Oakdale, Connecticut for well over a decade now, perhaps even
Well, even longer.
Even longer. Uh, the Washington DC trip, which has become an annual event for our eighth-grade students. And then the trip to um New York City by our seventh graders. They went this year for their inaugural year. Had a fantastic time and hope to make that an annual trip as well. So I do recommend approval of all of those. I'm happy to answer questions um if you have them. They all are well-planned events, I can say.
The only one I'm questioning is the first one, Auburn High School Field Trip to Adventure Park, Storrs, Connecticut for next week?
So my apologies, that one is, I I skipped down ahead. They um had forgotten to send it forward, so that one is actually for this year. That's an end-of-year celebration one at the Adventure Park. The one down further is for May of eighteen.
Okay. But we have talked about these trips before.
You have, you have, yes. Those are not new, not new trips.
So I would entertain um that motion for the Adventure Park.
I'll make the motion to approve the Adventure Park.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's a vote. And I would entertain a motion for the um trip to Dartmouth College.
I'll make a motion to approve the AHS Model UN trip to Dartmouth College in April twenty eighteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Through the chair, um you may wish to do this, um you don't have to, but if there is agreement on all of them, you could take them as a bundle and as a, as for the known out-of-state field trips in two thousand eighteen, if there's any questions on any, you can separate them out. Like offer that as an opportunity.
Well, we've all had an opportunity to to look at this. Are there any questions?
Nope.
No? All right, well, I would entertain a motion to bundle all of the um field trips presented this evening.
I will make a motion to bundle all of the field trips.
And approve. And uh do I have a second, Wayne? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's a vote.
Um, we also provide for you student handbook updates at this time uh of year. As you can see, the changes are minimal. Uh, most of them involve dates in updating, staff directories and such, enrollment figures. Um, sometimes some minor editing um that's done. But it is my recommendation that you approve these handbook changes. And what the principals will do with their administrative assistants is incorporate all of these. We have gone to a large extent green with our handbooks, but some of the elementary schools do include them in in um notebooks that they have, or plans, like those actually, yes.
I only had one question.
Sure.
On the high school handbook, there's a change that the possession, for possession under the influence of alcohol, marijuana, a minimum five-day suspension for each occurrence. This is a change from current language. Is this an increase or a decrease?
I believe, I don't have the copy in front of me. I believe, um, that it's specifying now that it's for each occurrence.
Okay.
And, uh, but any selling or distribution still remains at the 10. Actually, I, I would have to confirm on that, to be honest with you. So if you want to hold on that one, you can, I can bring that information back to you for the next time.
Okay. Well, I was just curious.
I don't think they would be more relaxed with what they were...
No, I wouldn't think so.
In the other direction out of that, or it just wasn't, it wasn't specified.
Yeah.
So I'm sure that...
Otherwise, I mean, everything was, it seemed fine.
Right.
The elementary, the primary schools matched and...
Okay, through the chair, I actually have one, it's more of a question, actually it is in line with the student handbooks if possible, just because I know that of, um, some of the handbooks were aligned on the bus policy, where previously they had spare, uh, bus policies. Is there any way that a link underneath the bus policy section on the APS website could send people to the handbooks? Just because I feel like a lot of parents don't understand that that is actually
Sure.
what governs the bus policy. It comes out of each school's handbook. Or in some way, they really more, uh, make it an easier way for parents to get to that information.
I, I think that there is. And I think that, um, with this information, um, being approved, that we could, it's easy enough, um, for Mr. Boobie and others to have links to connect information. So I, I don't think that that should be an issue, so we'll make note of, make sure that happens. No problem.
I appreciate it.
Um, with the Swiss, let's see, the bus contract, is that signed by the students driving?
It is. Yes, yeah, it is.
That's a smart idea.
It's not binding though, because they're only in Swiss.
They're a little young, you sign away their life?
It's okay, they're not watching, so I didn't give anything weird. Okay, I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes and updates to each of the school's handbooks as presented back to the 2017, 2018, will you?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. And maybe, Dr. Brunel, you could just get back, we'll see that in a...
Just for curiosity sake here.
Oh, through the chair, I have one more. Um, on the APS website, it actually says that the bus deadline is next month.
Oh.
Yeah, so you might wanna...
We will definitely change that. Um, we've, you know, obviously notified people probably 20-plus times of that, but we will get that changed tomorrow. Thank you.
This was supposed to be May 1st, right?
Yes, it was, yep.
How was that going with that?
We actually, um, as of Monday, we took in 1,441 applications.
Wow.
And last year on June 1st, we had taken 1,387, so we did even better than we did last year.
Excellent.
Um, we will certainly get some, we anticipate.
Right.
But, um, you know, it gets 60 more than we had last year, uh, at this time, even in a month earlier, um, with the new deadline. And so it was, it worked out positively. And we'll say the one call, uh, voice message, or one call, voice call that I did one night, uh, brought in an awful lot of people over those next couple of days.
Did you do a threaten?
No, I can tell, it's quickly approaching and, uh, they, they took it seriously, so, yeah.
That's all we need on the Auburn News.
Yeah, yeah.
Super dead of threatens families.
Well, I noticed, we talked about a little while ago when you were kinda...
It was low before.
Low, low and you were hoping for better and it's good, it did work out.
They did.
She used her big stick.
Yeah. So just sharing with you in, in Mrs. Worsbicky's absence, um, the audit management findings, um, which typically there are some ones, um, as you can see here, there were minor ones and in fact, they've already been, um, addressed. So this has been shared with the Board of Selectmen and just wanted to keep you apprised of it as well. The strategic plan, I thank again our planning team. We met most recently on April 10th. As I reported last night, um, we are at least 75% plus completed in all areas. And in some areas, we are 100%, um, in other areas, uh, well beyond the 75. So it is our recommendation that we move forward, likely in the fall at some point, perhaps on a Saturday. I think that worked well, uh, a morning to move forward with this, assuming you, you vote your approval. But I think it was a, uh, an important document. We have been posted in each of our schools and it really has driven, um, the decisions that we've made. It's driven our budgetary things. And I think having 120-plus people from the community, you know, all various, um, roles and responsibilities, students was, was a huge, um, benefit to us. So I would look to do something similar around that model we talked briefly about.
Question from the chair. Do, do you know if other surrounding towns go about their strategic plan the same way? By including people from the community and...
I, I think, um, my experience is most due in some way, at some level. Um, I think that what we did back in November of 2013, and, and I say we, I mean Dr. Lizé and the leadership team, uh, we had a facilitator there. We brought in some other individuals, uh, Town Manager was there, um, CFO Casnovich was there. And we generated a list of individuals, remember we did at the Auburn High Media Center, you know, who were some people, we had different categories that we wanted to invite. And then we made personal phone calls to them. So I think that really helped to get that large of a crowd there. Um, and, and I think that cross-section and including middle school and high school students was really important. Everyone had an opportunity to voice their opinion, you know, in answering that question, what do we need to have in place to make sure that we continue to move forward in the schools? So that would likely be the same model that we would look to do in next fall too.
I remember, um...
Congratulations to you guys for doing 75% of your, basically your promised forecast. So it's very impressive. Thanks.
I remember we had Gail Carberry, the president of Conseil.
We did.
And a lot of the pastors in town and quite a contingent.
Yeah, it was. It was a great, great cross-section. I agree.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to move forward with the creation of the new strategic plan in the fall of 2017.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
And then finally, just wanted to share with you, um, Town Manager Jacobson had, is participates on a, a panel discussion regarding municipal budgeting. So she wanted some information regarding special education costs. Um, as we know, our budget, uh, is higher for FY 18 due to, um, our obligation to support some students that we can't currently in district. So she just wanted this information and it is a, an issue across the Commonwealth, to be honest with you, that schools are experiencing.
And now we'll move on to unfinished business.
So wanted to provide you an update regarding the best practices group. If you remember, that was around, um, preschool and collaborating with our preschool providers. And just earlier this afternoon, Dr. Lizé and I were there, as well as Dr. Chamberlain, Mrs. Stanek, Mrs. Reedy. We had representatives from several of the preschools. Um, some weren't able to come just to, due to prior commitments, but it was a very positive meeting. We have, um, some ideas moving forward. Dr. Lizé had brought forward some ideas around specialized training, uh, particularly around literacy. We're gonna look to add some social emotional to that. Um, so there was some nice enthusiasm around it. We shared some ideas around cultural programs to offer. So I think we're well on our way to having it be a, a positive experience for everyone. So it's great.
Good, I was worried about that. I'm like, no one felt like we were stepping on their toes.
It was excellent in, in all of the, uh, they were all, the preschool programs were invited. We're gonna next reach out to the family childcare providers. And those who weren't able to make it, um, Mrs. Otten, or, or just to say, you know, was it the timing of it? Is there, you know, an issue or otherwise? And everyone just had other commitments. It's just such a busy time of year.
Yeah.
So, um, so I anticipate our next meeting, um, that we'll, we'll get even more attendance. So it was a really great meeting.
That is awesome because it's the whole community working together to give the preschoolers a great stat on their education.
Exactly.
That's awesome.
And that's, in fact, through the chair, what was even mentioned was, you know, we're all in this together. We're all supporting, you know, the better supports we create at that level, the stronger our kids are as they enter school and move forward. So, yeah, very, very positive.
Great.
Great.
Just a quick update on the reserve at Ashworth Hill, um, that it was recently approved at the March 29th Planning Board meeting. Um, if there are, for four single-family homes, if there are any other developments, Mr. Brunel promises to keep us apprised.
Good.
In terms of the Packer Shark Accelerated Repair, they held a meeting most recently on April 12th. Work is planned and scheduled to begin right after school gets out in June. It will be completed over the summer. Mr. Fahy's working closely with the team, as is Mrs. Worsbicky, um, and working with Mrs. Stanek to make sure that there is time when it's safe for staff to be in there as they ready their rooms and such. So all of that's well in the, in the works and, uh, being coordinated. So it'll go smoothly, I'm sure. And then finally, wanted to let you know that on just this past Friday was notified that, uh, unanimous vote of the, uh, Asset Valley Collaborative Board was to bring us on board. So, um, now it's really more the formality of bringing it to school committees, uh, which may take a bit of time, but, um, already some of our, uh, leadership team members are taking advantage of their job alike groups, which is great. So they promised me we will be in.
I'm glad they accepted us.
Thank you. Exactly, yeah.
I wouldn't have after I'm getting recognized as a teacher. I don't know that I could have handled that disappointingly.
I was gonna say, what's not to like about Auburn?
Okay, we now move on to new business.
So just wanted to apprise you, just as we did, uh, when we first entered into iPad lease agreements, um, as you know, the middle school project purchased them outright for, uh, at Auburn Middle School and we purchased some others at the lower grades as well with town meetings approval. Uh, but we are asking the high school, Dr. Lizé and I met with the department heads with Mr. Handfield, and we brought in a few sample Chromebooks and we are not trying to lead them in any direction. We want it to be exactly what they want it to be. The iPads have been tremendously successful there. So they're right now in just a little bit of a, a pilot of studying those. We're hoping to have a final, we've got our survey that Mr. Boobie had created by the end of next week. And that way, we just want to be sure before we enter into a new lease agreement that we're giving them exactly what they want for their students. So, uh, it seems the iPad is out in front right now, I would suspect, but we will let you know what kind of, what results from that.
Um, price-wise, both the same or...
Interestingly, um, so the Chromebooks have, have been less right along.
Yeah.
But we initially didn't go with them because of, um, that they did not have the same functionality that we wanted in the iPad.
Sure.
Um, so the Chromebooks have come up, I think, in quality, I think would be fair to say. And we just learned recently that, uh, the Apple has reduced their price on the iPads. My guess is that they're feeling a pinch from the Chromebooks a bit.
Good.
Um, so, you know, a little competition in the market is a good thing. So either way, uh, we're likely to be saving some money.
Great.
Yeah, so we will keep you apprised.
Good.
Great, thank you for that.
And then the upcoming events, I, I've shared already about Les Mis, which happened, um, already. Next weekend, actually, um, we forgot to note it on here, on the 12th and 13th. Oh, no, it is on here, just didn't say the title. The Middle School Production, the musical, it's an original. It's Tidallo in the Prince or Tidallo in the Key?
In the Key.
In the Key.
Prince of the Key or something?
Prince of the Key.
Something like that.
The students have been hard at work. In fact, um, some of them were practicing, uh, the musical portions of it, uh, I heard recently too. So lots taking place there, end-of-year events, Grandparents' Day, um, Special Visitors' Day. Um, and then also to remind you, our Special Olympics, which will take place on Friday, May 18th, will be in Leicester, um, plan to well-end away for that. And they do a fabulous job in Leicester and we will be hosting it next year, which will be great.
And tomorrow is the Festival of the Arts at the high school?
Tomorrow afternoon is the Festival of the Arts, STEM and Wellness at the high school. It is a phenomenal event. It takes place from 4:00 to 7:00. People can drop in, you can stay for an hour or two, you can stay for 15 minutes. There are events in the gym, there's, huh? Um, there is, uh, physical ed demonstrations, there's musical performances ongoing, there's artwork for every student currently taking or who's taken art this year. Um, they've got robotics on display, some STEM activities. So what started as truly a fine arts has expanded into so many other areas that kids can go up and walk in through the high school and, um, they still do the scavenger kinda check-in?
Yeah.
Yeah, to go and visit different areas, so great event.
Good stamp to prove that they attended and saw different events.
Yeah.
Ooh.
And we now move on to teaching.
So as you know, yesterday was a half-professional development day and you should have the agenda in your packet. Um, that day was planned to allow principals to do some building-based activities rather than have it all be district-based. The primary schools use the afternoon to look at student data and to start talking about class placements for next year. Swanson Road actually engaged in some Go Math Assessment work under the guidance of Marie Mahan, who was our coach. The Auburn Middle School had a few department heads trained for free in the morning on the EFS and Brightlinks. It now has some advanced capabilities that they weren't aware of. And then in the afternoon, they kinda did the train, the trainer model and they trained their other staff within the department. So everybody's excited that there's some new ways to use that tool. And at the high school, Dr. Englander from the Mark, the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center, came and talked to all of the staff again, we've had her before, she's excellent, around bullying and cyberbullying and all of that. So overall, I think it was a good day. There were some vertical meetings as well for the Fine Arts Department and our IAs and our ABAs. Next, I think you're aware also that yesterday we had a visit from, um, some Saudi Arabia educators, similar to what we did back in October when the Kuwaiti educators visited us. Um, they are also working with the World Bank and Harvard University, as the other group did, and just kinda build their capacity as leaders in order to improve their programming back in their country. So there were 20 men that came and visited us. They came to the high school first, Dr. Brunel welcomed them and gave an overview of the, the district and how things are set up and the support we have within the district. And then we highlighted one of our initiatives with them around inclusion. Mrs. Reedy and myself, around our inclusive practices, how important that is to us in Auburn, as well as the co-teaching. And then Mr. Handfield and Ms. Dunne, who took them around the school and actually showed them classrooms where co-teaching was happening. So that was a great connection for them. From there, we went to the middle school. Mr. Gagnon presented on the one-to-one iPad initiative and they were very impressed with that as well. Kept asking us, "Well, where did you get them? How did you get them? How did you fund them?" So it was impressive. Burn Ma was next. Kept to see the little ones, of course, all the time. They did a little presentation, Mrs. Stanek and Dr. Chamberlain around data and data collection. It was interesting to watch them ask so many questions because they haven't got to a point yet where they use data or use it as accountability for teachers or for, um, administrators. So they were very curious about all of that, um, and actually asked to have that PowerPoint sent to them. They visited classrooms and, and our little kids, which they should. But then we went back to the middle school for a luncheon prepared by the food service department, which was culturally appropriate. I don't know how many of them raised their hands to thank us, how, what a great job she had done on that luncheon. They also, Mr. Carlson was able to ask several students to stay after, even though it was a half-day and they could go home and have the day free. They stayed along with their ELL teacher, ELA teacher, Ms. Young. And they shared all their favorite apps that are on the iPads. And what they had done had, had been to create a quiz around facts around the US and Massachusetts. And they had the, um, educators from Saudi Arabia take that quiz using the app Kahoots. And it was funny at first, they couldn't get on and the students helped them get on. And then once they got started, it became this great competition. And you could see them say to the, to students, "Come tell us this." They loved that and we had a winner, of course. Um, but then we ended the day just with a question-answer period. They were very inquisitive about our practices. They were very impressed. The man from the World Bank came over and said to me several times, "They are so impressed." And one individual said, "I think they must just send us to all the best districts." And that was a high compliment I can tell. So it was a great day overall, you know, the, the fact that we didn't have a lot of time to plan, but at the end of the day, you turn and you said, "This was great, so glad we did it." So it was awesome. And we will receive a thousand-dollar honorarium for doing this. And once we have that in hand, we'll ask that it's deposited in our helping our own fund that we created recently, so.
Can I give you a quick question? The culture of Saudi Arabia tends to favor the men and the women have a second-place role. So how did they respond to all our women that are in leadership roles? Do you think it made a difference? Do you...
I found them extremely respectful, very polite, um, appreciative of everything we did for them. Yeah, very inquisitive, not afraid to ask us questions and...
We, through the chair, we, we wondered that before, you know? We, through the chair, we, we wondered that before, you know?
Yeah.
Because it was a group of, of all men.
Right. I mean, they don't even let their women drive in that country, I mean.
Tell you, just extremely respectful and, and as Dr. Laze said, I mean, one of them, um, said to me, I was showing him to a place he needed to go. And he said, you know, it is so kind and respectful here. And as I complimented when we met with leadership earlier today, that, um, you know, I want us, we want us to, um, have high academic standards and, and all these opportunities for children and staff. But as staff saw them, everyone would say, well, welcome, oh, hi, how are you and stuff? And they were just so moved by how welcome they were by everybody, which is really nice, really, really nice to see.
Maybe they'll go home and empower their women a little bit more too. That'd be nice.
Don't hold your breath.
I know, it's been entrenched for a long time, but.
Yeah.
That's great.
So Dr. Minell talked a little bit about the Festival of the Arts, it is tomorrow evening, four to seven. Again, the really great thing about this is you can actually see the growth of our kids, K to twelve. It used to be that we held these events in our own individual schools, but when you walk in, you see a kindergarten artwork and you move through the grades and you get to the high school. So impressive to see that development, you know? So if you have an opportunity, drop by, get there early to get a pack and play, 'cause lots of people come.
Yeah.
It's a great event. And finally, um, I just wanted to announce that we were very fortunate recently to hear that we had been awarded, um, the Youth Opiate Prevention Grant that we had applied for back in the fall. We actually were awarded a full amount of nine thousand eight hundred and six dollars. That was great. Um, and just so everybody's aware, that was a very competitive grant. I think they received a hundred and twenty applications, it took them a long time, they didn't even meet their deadline, they had to go through so many applications. Um, and then as I think that one of the highlights of this whole grant was that it was really like you were speaking to before, community effort. So once this grant came out that we could apply for, a group of us met, um, Dr. Minell, myself, Ed Kasnovich, Julie Jacobson, Chief Coleman, Chief Slukas, and Dallin Coyle came and we sat around a table and we just talked about, you know, the urgency of this problem and, and how it could be addressed community-wise. And the result of that was that we really had a tiered program. We decided to write a grant that met some needs of the community in general, met family needs, parent needs, but also met student needs. So, you know, we feel like we actually gonna make an impact through this grant, so we're very, very excited. Some of the activities, um, that we had planned was to bring back Chris Heron, we had him at the high school, he's very impactful and powerful. But to use him for parents and maybe some community vendors this time, as well as, you know, students can come along. We're going to purchase a middle school prevention curriculum and train our teachers in how to deliver that. Um, we're also going to purchase a family program and train teachers in terms of how to, um, support families and train them with those materials. And we also, similar to what the students talked about there, we put in for some stipends for our TV production staff to create a public announcement around all of this and have our students do that. So it's a really well-rounded program and we're excited about it, so we'll give you an update as we begin to roll it out.
That sounds, that's great. Um, so which content areas do you think we'd be teaching, um, that part of the curriculum?
So when we originally wrote the grant, we talked about it being our guidance people, as well as maybe our PE people who get into some help.
That's great. If it's, if it saves, um, one or two or a, a family here or there, um, that's.
It ties it nicely with the escort that we've talked about, that survey we're going to give students. So when those students are in ninth grade and they take that survey, we'll actually be able to judge maybe some of the effectiveness of the program.
That sounds like, um, we've been collaborating with some of the bigger players in town, so that's, that's fantastic that they're on board.
It's very nice, yeah.
And they see it, they're, they're in the trenches every day, so they see the full effect of it. And we see once in a while, um, some of, some of our students coming for some of the issues, either with their family or themselves, but they see it daily, dozens of times a day, so. It's great that we're approaching it from all angles.
Yeah.
Thank you for, um, helping to put that together. Any comments, questions? Thank you for that report, Dr. Laze. And we now move on to everyone's.
Thank you, Mr. Worsbicky.
This is financial.
We've provided a year-to-date budget report. Um, Mrs. Worsbicky and I, as well as Dr. Laze, we review it regularly. We are in, um, good shape at this point and we'll likely be coming forward at the next meeting or the one thereafter, um, for your approval on omnibus transfers. Because as we close up the year, uh, we obviously wanna make sure that we don't end in the negative in any line. And to that point, uh, we've provided a, some transfers, um, to the budget that we'd like to make at this point. They are all ones that are within, um, the series, so it does not require your approval, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions regarding the transfers? Seeing none.
And then the last item, actually the Specialized Stabilization Fund, we had talked briefly about that. We did postpone indefinitely. I do think it is an important, uh, article, it is an important fund for us to bring back in the fall. So we'll certainly add that to our future agenda and, um, make sure that that goes forward. I think it makes sense, quite honestly, not only for the school district, um, but certainly for the town, yeah.
Any ideas on, on how we might bring that forward? Um, would, would it be a presentation, would it be, um, sort of some statistics and, and paperwork, so I thought ahead of time?
I think so, I, I think, you know, all of those things, and well, we've talked briefly with, um, Mr. Kasnovich in particular around this and, you know, whether we provide, you know, some statistics to them, um, perhaps, you know, there even be a meeting that we, you know, describe it for them. We have provided some memos and information, but put together, uh, a little bit more of a packet. You know, some of the things that we'll have to grapple with is, and Mrs. Worsbicky's been in touch with, um, Jay Sullivan, who's from, um, Desi from the finance, um, department there. Is that what some districts are doing is putting in line in their budget. It may not even have a value, um, to it or putting a small value to it that if there is remaining funds that we could transfer it in the year and then transfer it out to the, to the fund. The idea of having a fund established when unanticipated, um, particularly added, specifically added district issues come up. Um, they can range, you know, in a low of forty thousand dollars to a high I've seen over the years of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that does not include transportation. So, um, it's as, you know, we've described, it has the potential to be one of the most volatile areas of our budget. So I think putting in place a safeguard, a safety net for that just makes sense. Um, and actually, you know, when this was first brought forward, keeping it outside of the operating budget does not then increase the operating budget, it has it as a safety for when you need to use it and stuff. Which obviously we've shown, you know, with the hundred thousand dollar article that was approved numerous years ago, we've not used that because we've not had the need to yet. We will next year, assuming all of these student placements hold. Um, so I think it is, and, and I took, um, I thought it was a, a strong statement from both the finance committee and the Selectmen last night, that conceptually they agree with this, this makes sense to them. So I think we're just looking at ironing out some of the finer details, to the degree we have the answers for it.
I, I, if I might, I noticed last night that some of the people that asked the most questions had obviously done their homework and they had read the Warren articles and they had looked up things, so that they could then fire back with real questions. So if we give them as much information as we can possibly do, maybe that will quell some of the doubters. We're not trying to hide anything, we're not trying to sneak anything by anybody. These are our real issues and this is why we're doing it and maybe it'll go through fairly smoothly.
We've, we've certainly got some time to do that and I'm sure we could even include a few stories, horror stories of districts who were not prepared to do this and had to go back to the town. And then where are those cuts made? Those, those cuts are gonna be made in places where they're gonna affect our students, some of the students that were here tonight, some of the students that have been doing wonderful things that we've been celebrating tonight. Their instructors, their mentors are gonna be taken away from them and that's what it comes down to, because the town only has so much money to give. So really, it'll, it only makes sense. We've got plenty of time to put together a pretty comprehensive, um, report, um, slash presentation, so. I'm confident that, um, it, it'll take place next, next downtown meeting.
And I could add a real case. Beginning of when the middle school was formed, um, a young student from Auburn got sick over the summer and he had to come back in a wheelchair and they had planned to give him a one-on-one. And then some student moved into the town that needed to be housed at a private school for their special needs and it took all that was left in the budget and our student that we had in sixth grade didn't get the one-on-one. There was no money for it. So all the teachers were scrambling and stuff, but that student should have had the one-on-one, but that was the best they could do because of that input, that influx of that student that they hadn't, hadn't planned on, they moved into town and in the hour and.
Well, that's not gonna happen on our watch, 'cause we have to have a special town meeting to fix a situation like that, that's exactly what we'll do. There you go. But, um, everyone here is passionate, passionate about, um, reaching all of our children.
That's right.
Actually, those are special.
Yeah, that was a little sad.
And we do not need to go into executive session tonight.
Oh, good.
We're refusing to because we were out late last night. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote. Good night, everyone.